We will call to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting Tuesday, November 28, 2017, Pennsylvania County General District Courtroom, Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Commission, 11 Bank Street, Chatham District. Roll call, Ms. Flitton.
Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mr. Haggerman?
Here.
Mr. Blackstock?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Barkstow?
Present.
Mr. Warren?
Here. I would ask that you would observe a moment of silence with this place. Thank you. I would add two, John, some pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add the Contract Amendment Number Six for the Harris Radio Court.
Number Seven. Okay, any discussion? All in favor of adding that item to the agenda? Raise your right hand. Okay? Are there any other items to be added to the agenda? Mr. Barber?
Mr. Chairman, I'd also add item 11A2, Contract Amendment, Harris Radio Court.
Number Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Scares. Any discussion?
Is that the same? Is that redundant?
We have two. We have two different.
Are there two different items? It's the same thing, right?
I think they've already covered everything. Go around the same guy, okay? Spin it, Mr. Barber.
Withdraw.
My fault. Going to get an approval of the agenda now. Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the agenda with the added item. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Davis. Roll call, Ms. Flitton.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barkstow?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. We alluded to the hearing of citizens portion. Ladies and gentlemen, when you come forward, please state your name and district. We would appreciate if you were speaking into the microphone, as I'm not doing. So your comments can be heard. The hearing of citizens format is not a question and answer session, but I assure you that the board will be listening to your comments. Each person making comments will have three minutes. When the amber light comes on, you have approximately one minute remaining to speak. I will call you in order if you've signed up. First is Mr. James Owen.
Good evening, how y'all doing? Good evening, how y'all doing? My name's James Owen. I live in the Callens, Gretna District, and I'm here about the green dumpsters. I'm not only here for myself, but everybody in the Callens, Gretna District that is very, very, very upset. We done emailed Mr. Haggerman up there, and we get all of these excuses back. Why are they taking the green dumpsters? They took eight away and left two to do the place of eight. Excuse me. So what they doing is, they come into this dumpster site, and they throwing all the trash when the dumpsters gets full. They throw all the trash on the ground. Then here comes the dogs, here comes the animals. They strolling it everywhere. So us citizens, not the landfill employees, is home to come and pick it up. Now, they telling us is, they taking all the green dumpsters away, they gonna build these compactor sites in years to come. Well, it's a funny thing to us, it's when they built the compactor sites at Mount Herman, 41, then hit Cherrystone on 57, they didn't take your green dumpsters away before they built the compactor site. I mean, common sense will tell you that you need to leave the green dumpsters before you be, I mean, till you build the compactor sites. I mean, so, we got an email from Mr. Haggerman saying that they measure five miles as a crow flies for the citizens to be close to the compactor site. Well, our argument is, well, within one mile, and that's not as a crow flies, Mr. Haggerman, that we had five dumpsters. Now, let me ask you this. Is it feasible to take all the dumpsters away, leave two dumpsters, send a truck up there three times a week to dump those two dumpsters, and when you could send a truck up there one time a week to dump all eight? It don't make no sense. There's no common sense being used whatsoever. So not, but, you know, what it is, is, y'all, you're just like the people in Washington, DC. You forgot about the farmers, you forget about rural America, and I'm looking at you, Mr. Haggerman, because we voted you in. You realize these farmers out here, how much taxes they pay? How much taxes they pay? And then we get treated like this? But when you go down to Mount Herman or 41, them people didn't get treated like that. So, and we don't want you to say, well, we gonna get back with you. We don't want that. We want answers. Now, now, let me ask you this. So I called Mr. Hicks yesterday and complained, well, they was up there within an hour and dumped the dumpsters. And then, within another hour, it was three trucks sitting there with pickup trucks fully loaded.
Correct.
So, that's, can somebody get back with us? What's gonna happen at Christmas time?
Next to sign up is Ms. Mary Catherine Plaster. Ms. Plaster?
Thank you. I'm Mary Catherine Plaster. I live in the Chatham District. But I'm here tonight to represent the Pennsylvania Historical Society, because I'm older than all of y'all, I think. And we started out in 73, which makes us about 44 years old as a group. And the county has been most helpful, most agreeable, and should be appreciated, we think, for your commitment to preserving the history of Pennsylvania County, and particularly now since everyone has discovered tourism. If you look over here at this board, they are the ornaments we've done of restorations, most of which you have to take care of for us by law. And tonight, I wanted, I don't know that I'm allowed to do this, perhaps you should. We brought each of the members of the board an ornament of the Pennsylvania courthouse where you meet, which was the first one we did. And it was very popular for a long time. And then, for the administration, I brought a gift to you for the, this year's Pennsylvania County ornament in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And I should have said-
Thank you.
-Mr. Warren, Chairman, and esteemed members of the Board of Supervisors. So I apologize for not doing so. But we used to meet, you used to let us meet in the courthouse. And it was standing room only, and most of those people are in the grave. And it doesn't cost a lot of money to join us, and we do have four public meetings, and four programs of interest, and four packets that you get for joining us. So it means a lot, particularly for you to know that for our information this year, to get money to do the historic work we've tried to do every month, we're in the newspaper every week. You gave us permission, as a board, none of you was on it, when we met in the courthouse, to replicate the flag and sell it. So that's the Pennsylvania County flag, which is a unique thing that you all also preserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Plaster, and thank you from the board for the ornament. And am I to assume you sell those ornaments too?
Yes, we do. We have, every year at Callens, the first Saturday in October, we have that here. So next year, we'll be doing the 100th anniversary of the train station. And that's where they come.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on, next on the agenda is Herman Hudson.
Mr. Chairman, board, employees of Pennsylvania County, and honorable citizens of Pennsylvania County. I wish I could say I was glad to be speaking to you tonight. I'm here tonight to address my concerns with this board and the actions of county administration. I've spoken to my board member numerous times about these concerns, and after a few weeks, it's obvious that these concerns have gone unheard of. First and foremost, I would ask that each of you listen to the next points carefully. When you became a member of this board, you took on a great responsibility, one that is to benefit our county and one is to benefit your community. You made a personal decision to run for public office and vote on all matters pertaining to this county with integrity and altruism. This is certainly not the form for me to ask questions, but I do want you to take a minute and think about what I have said. Trust me, you should be more than glorified department heads. Now, I want to take this opportunity to address my concerns with the current actions of this board and the administration in this county. This is certainly not an attempt to slander any member of this board nor employee of Pennsylvania County. However, your actions and your votes have consequences. Members of the board in this community ultimately report to the citizens of Pennsylvania County. That is the foundation upon which democracy was built. The government is responsible and accountable to the people it serves. For this board and this administration to take that responsibility lightly bothers me. This list of my concerns is by no means all-inclusive. However, I only have three minutes, and trust me, I can lecture you for hours on big government. Let me begin my concerns by saying how we got here. Each of you is accustomed to having zero accountability. There are decisions made by this board that make Nancy Pelosi proud. The decisions made by this board should be voted for by each member and done with integrity. The lack of accountability ends today. There have been positions created in government expansion that makes no sense when no regard to fiscal responsibility. There have been purchases made by this county administrator that clearly are questionable. And if you, as a board, looked at them and approved them, you should be ashamed of yourselves. I was able to find that a reasonable moving expense even counts for a soil and site evaluation on property you don't even occupy. I listened to you at the last board meeting to approve spending $1.5 million to create 80 jobs. I have yet to see them. I've been able to ride through empty industrial parks embarrassed. Now I hear the county wants to borrow five more million, five million more dollars. You've got to be kidding. You can start by funding the rescue truck that sits idly outside while your county administrator person pushes his personal public safety agenda. Where does this nonsense end? Trust me, I understand economic development, and the answer is not build it and they will come. Every single one of you should be ashamed to ask for another dollar. On next year's budget, given the hiring that has happened and the money that's already been spent, there is not one of you that can tell me a tax increase is not coming. If you have looked at next year's tax, next year's budgets and can say that a tax increase is not coming, you are kidding yourself. Yet you allow this county administration and yourselves to even consider borrowing money. You have got to be kidding me. I realize the makeup of this board will soon change. However, is this the disaster that you choose to leave as your legacy? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Barber, next up is Ms. Hancock, Barbara Hancock.
All right. So I'm gonna be a little more pleasant here. All right. And this is specifically for you all up there. As you know, I'm Barbara Hancock. I ran for the Callens, Gretna Board of Supervisor seat for Jerry's seat, and it was quite an adventure. And I really enjoyed getting to know each of you at different levels and, and just experiencing just a little touch of what y'all go through. And I want to encourage the citizens, regardless of what you think about anyone up here, each and every one of them put a tremendous amount of time into the jobs that they do. And they, they have to take on a lot of abuse, honestly, as I see it. And I've experienced it through the campaign, and it's for what? I mean, as far as financial gain, it's certainly not for that. It's for giving to the public. And I thank each and every one of you for what you've done and what you're doing and what you've done for years. And, and I've learned so much through this to just keep you guys and other politicians in prayer. It is, it's not an easy job, regardless of, you know, where you stand on issues or anything. Y'all put your heart and souls into it, and I respect each and every one of you. And it's really hard not to become emotional, because I put a lot into that campaign, and that makes me know a little bit about what y'all put into your jobs that you do here. And I know that the citizens don't understand it. They, I know that they don't understand where decisions come from. I know I certainly didn't until I started campaigning. And I've learned so much, and I do appreciate y'all. And as you know, there's still a recount to be done, although my opponent did file to have that dismissed today, and we'll find that out on December 14th, tentatively. But, so, more than likely by the next meeting, we'll know one way or the other. But I just want to thank you all for everything you do. I know that, I appreciate y'all. And I specifically want to give a little shout out to Jerry and Ron for the huge amount of integrity and honesty that I saw personally in you guys throughout the time that I've gotten to know y'all. And, and I hope that the citizens of our county will come to appreciate y'all more. And I know that regardless of the outcome, I'll do my part to help them understand the importance of y'all's job and the dedication that y'all put into your jobs. And thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock, and thank you for your willingness to rush. We've completed the hearing of the citizens. No one else signed up. We're down to consent agenda.
We have to sign a law to.
Come on up, Ms. Bowles.
Sorry.
You're on case. You're not gonna speak on case three, right?
No, I don't have a clue what that is. Sorry, sorry. It's been a long, eventful day.
It's all right.
So, well, good evening. So, really, I just wanted to do a little tourism update, because it's been a little over a year since our tourism program started. So if you'll bear with me for just a few minutes, I'll try not to take up too much of your time. So, the first thing that I did the second week of my job, I applied for a $50,000 tourism grant. Didn't get the 50, but we got a $25,000 grant from Virginia Tourism Corporation. This spring, we also received, well, we were notified that we would be receiving another $5,000 grant, so nothing but good stuff this way. We developed a calendar of events, new branding, Experience Danville, Pennsylvania County. This is our new logo, and we do have shirts for you all at the end. A three-year strategic plan, social media presence, including Facebook, which is at almost 900 likes, and Instagram, which currently has 250 followers, and Twitter. We held tourism stakeholder meetings to determine shared marketing opportunities and needs, to assist with registering with and updating stakeholder listings on Virginia.org, and to allow for feedback on how the chamber can help tourism stakeholders be successful. And that included attractions, lodging, agrotourism, and just the general public. I attended the Virginia Tourism Orientation, the Virginia Association of Convention and Visitor bureaus Tourism Symposium, and the 2017 Virginia Agrotourism Conference, as well as the Virginia One Summit. The Danville, Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce was named the Destination Marketing Organization, or the DMO, for Pennsylvania County, February 21st for the city of, I'm sorry, February 21st for Pennsylvania County, and March 7th for the city of Danville. And basically, what that means is being the DMO, I, well, not necessarily me, but it is my job, I am the contact for Virginia Tourism. So if they say, Amy, do you, if I get an email, Amy, do you have any recommendations for a restaurant or any upcoming events? I can just give them a response, and they'll just go through me. It just makes the process a lot easier, especially since we didn't have this. We developed a brand-new tourism website, Experience DPC, just because Danville, Pennsylvania County was way too long to put out there, so Experience DPC. If you haven't checked it out, please do. Also, if you haven't liked our social media pages, please do. On the website, we have an About section, attractions, a whole slew of events on our events calendar, food and drink, where to stay, where to shop, history, agrotourism, arts, venues. We have a blog, we have a newsletter, we even have an interactive map. So it's amazing. I highly recommend it. Might be biased, but that's just me. So far, we have visitors from states including California, Missouri, Arizona, Illinois, Nevada, Georgia, Texas, Alabama, Connecticut, Florida, Kansas, Maryland, New York, South Carolina, and Tennessee. So it's amazing that these, you know, different states are actually interested in coming and taking a look at what we have to offer here in Danville and Pennsylvania County. The average duration on our website is eight minutes and 21 seconds, and we have had over 2,900 page views. We've got new photography done, new videography done, and, you wanna show Dan the love sign? So today, we're kinda on a tourism promotion today. Today, our brand-new love work sign was released at the chamber. It is the only mobile love sign in the state, and there's over 90 different signs. Ours is the only one that they have granted permission to so far to be mobile, so that's amazing in itself. And we received over $10,000 worth of monetary donations and in-kind services. Also, Virginia Tourism Corporation will be reimbursing 1,500. So the L is barn wood. We've got the pictures going around. The L is barn wood with a tobacco leaf to represent history and heritage. The O is a Goodyear aircraft tire for the workforce and also for motorsports. The V, on one side of the V, it's an oar and a canoe for the lakes and rivers and all the water activity. The opposite side is like grapes and wine glasses and mugs to represent the agrotourism as far as breweries and wineries. And the E, if you look at the vertical bar, it's pictures of Danville. The top bar is Chatham, middle is Gretna, and the bottom is Hert. So it's just different locations and attractions throughout the city and the county. So I think it turned out great. I couldn't be happier with it. Hopefully, you all will come and take a look. Thanks, Jesse. I know you already have. It's currently at the chamber through Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It'll be in the parades. Then it's moving to the Community Holiday Light Show. So I've got a whole lot going on with that. Trying to go fast. And yesterday, I did a little sneak peek on Facebook, a little teaser for it. Just that post alone reached almost 4,000 people. And that's not paid boosting or anything, that's just organic shares. So that shows you how invested and excited and happy the citizens of Danville and Pennsylvania County are. You might ask, how does that tie into tourism? If you're driving up the road, going up 29, you look over and you see this huge love sign, I mean, I'm gonna stop and take a picture with it. As you stop and get to look, and you see exactly what our region is about. So we're super excited about that. We're also part of the Dan River State Crossings Initiative, as well as Fish Virginia First. I attend regular meetings with surrounding localities, and we're currently working on developing a Southern Virginia tourism initiative. That includes Halifax County, Martinsville Henry County, and Mecklenburg County. And we currently have a strong presence on Virginia.org, because I have completed over 195 listings. Virginia.org is the state tourism website. It gets over 16 million different viewers annually. Prior to this tourism program, Danville and Pennsylvania County didn't really have a presence on there at all. There were maybe 10 or 20 listings, but it's nothing but free marketing. So by being on Virginia.org, for example, Chatham Public House was featured in Served Up Fresh for 2017, 25 new restaurants in Virginia that you need to try. So as I was saying, you know, being the DMO, they reached out to me, and I said, well, hey, Chatham Public House is new. They put them on the blog. So it just, it comes full circle. It's really amazing. Also, Owen Farm was featured in 17 Corn Mazes to Solve This Fall, and the Pennsylvania County Historic History Research Center was featured on Virginia's Historic Train Depots Part One. And that's just a little sampling. In September, we held familiarization tours for frontline staff, and that was for Danville. We're currently planning for Pennsylvania County. And this is very interesting. I made several nominations for the Virginia Restaurant Lodging and Travel Association Awards. The Home Place Vineyard was actually winner-up for Winery of the Year. So that was awesome. And we just got in our new t-shirts. We're gonna sell those for $12. We have shirts for you all tonight. If you are interested, anyone, if anyone's interested in purchasing them, they will be $12 at the chamber office. And as I mentioned before, a love work sign is on display right now at the Chamber of Commerce. This weekend, it'll be in the Chatham Parade and the Danville Parade, and then move into the Holiday Light Show from the night through the 25th. On December 5th, I'll be speaking to the Chatham Rotary Club about tourism, and on December the 6th, we're holding a regional agrotourism workshop. So if anyone is interested in the regional agrotourism workshop, please contact me for more information. And hopefully, that didn't take too long. Any questions? That was a lot, I know. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Ms. Bowles, for being here tonight, one of our past board members. And thank you all very much for the shirts and the red cards.
And there are different sizes. Some are extra-large, and some are double X. I didn't know who needed what.
Well, you need my size, I have smalls.
I hope not.
Now, I got cut off at three minutes. This lady went on for at least eight minutes.
It's for an organization.
Organizations are treated differently in about that.
Maybe next time, I'll bring y'all a t-shirt.
We'll leave the move to rezoning cases.
Consent.
We skip the consent. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Check it off, because we got to come back. Consent agenda. Let's play.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we can send an agenda.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barkstow, seconded by Mr. Davis. Roll call, Ms. Flitton.
Mr. Barkstow?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Now, we're down to public hearing, rezoning cases. We've zoned cases. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to R-5, Division 6 of Pennsylvania County zoning order, we the Board of Supervisors have the power to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of city ordinance. In accordance with the important task, we are responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all of our decisions and regulations be directed to these goals, and that each be consistent with the environment, a comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County citizens and its prosperity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At that time, I will...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We were, the county administration received a letter from Twin Rivers Capital on rezoning case R-17-039 with a request to withdraw with no penalty, and I make a motion that we approve that.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flitton.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barkstow?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I make just a quick statement? There's a lot of people here that were expecting to speak at the public hearing. I just wanted to let you know, what's gonna happen is, Twin Rivers is gonna try to set up a town hall with you people. I don't know how, how well that's gonna go with the overwhelming, I guess, opposition to this case, but I felt it was fair for them to have the opportunity to at least talk with you guys. They also want to get with VDOT and do a traffic study and see if there's any way they can improve the safety of the intersection in that area at their expense. And I felt, for me, I felt it was worth giving them that opportunity. Doesn't mean that it's gonna get approved later on down the road. I just wanted him to have the opportunity to talk directly to you guys and try to get any misinformation that's been out there. You can get it directly from the, from the developers. Thank you.
Thank you. That being tabled, I will move to case number two. William A. Rod, William A. Rod Jenkins and others, Spanish for the Mexican district.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, case two, R-17-040, William H. Rogers Jr. and others have petitioned to rezone 1.20 acres located on US Highway 29 North in the Bannister Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B2 Business District General for future commercial development, those specific uses identified at this time. Once the property is rezoned to B2, then all use is listed under Section 35-365 are permitted use. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by an 8-0 vote. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rogers is here to present the petition.
Mr. Rogers, do you have anything to add?
This, this property is 29 property, and it's one of the first intersections after you get off of the limited access. And it has a crossover right in front of it. To present time, it is served with water, canal water, this sewer in the community, and all of surrounding property. And I think you have a map that shows that it's zoned business.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Stay close in case anybody has any questions. No one signed up, so Board's pleasure. Close the public hearing. I'm sorry. 7:31. Thank you, Mr. Barxdale.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve case two, R-17-040, to rezonate 1.20 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B2 Business District General. The rezoning is supported by a comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barxdale, and seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? Mr. Davis. No, Mr. Barber got you. Cut you out. Cut you out, Mr. Davis. I'm sorry.
No charge.
Role call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barxdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. We'll move to case number three, and we'll open the public hearing at 7:32. Mr. Sides?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Case three, R-17-041, William H. Rogers Jr. and Judith Rogers have petitioned to rezone a total of 88.41 acres consisting of three parcels of land located off US Highway 29 North in the Bannister Election District from A1 Agricultural District and RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to M2 Industrial District Heavy Industry for future industrial development. Once the properties are rezoned to M2, then all use is listed under Section 35-402 are permitted use. The planning commission with opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by an 8-0 vote. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. William Rogers is here to present the petition.
Okay, Mr. Rogers. Anything you'd like to add?
This, this property is also, that's also a direct access into 29. It has canal water and sewer on site. Most of the gra, a lot of the grazing has already been done. You'll have a partial of site land in the package there that shows. The property directly across the road was mine, was zoned into, and was expected to happen here, similar to what happened over there. We've been talking about, we were gonna rezonate and stole all the cars that were flooded over in Texas over there. That's nothing to that, which is worthy. I've got property right straight across the road from Copart that's our site that we could stop. This property has no environmental issues, no wetland, no creeks crossing it. It does have creek and side. One of the parcels is a pond that's been rezoned. The engineer said that could be used for sediment erosion, which all the parts of it, that I can be used for sediment erosion.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Stay close. Any questions? We do have a couple of votes to be signed up for this one. The first one is Mr. Jim Scares.
Hello, my name's Jim Scares. I'm in the Westover District. And you might ask, why does this concern me? It's because of adjoining property I've had hunting rights on for the past four years. Now, I'm not totally opposed to the land being rezoned. I'm just opposed to it being rezoned M2, which would include chemical manufacturing. Kind of concerns me on a, you know, coming side of piece of land that I hunt on, recycling centers. If you go through this whole list, it opens the door for any of it to go there. And I don't know what Mr. Rogers' plan is to use it for, but this, once he's dead and gone, any of this can be put there. Now, as far as no wetland on the property, there used to be a pond there years ago that was a spring-fed pond. The dam has been removed, and the pond is no longer there, but the spring is still there, and the spring is still active. And I have pictures on my cellphone that will show the water that runs underneath the culvert. There's a access road that runs between the two properties all the way to the back of the property. There's a culvert. There are three sets of culverts underneath that road for runoff off of his property onto Mr. Owens' land that is lower land that feeds a creek below him, that feeds a pond back behind him, that feeds into the Bannister River, that feeds in the Dan River. And one of these culverts has water running through it all the time. And on my cellphone, I can show you the water running through it. So that tells me that that spring is still active. And it's not there just anytime. It's there all the time. It's there right now. I can take you out there right now and show you the water running through it. So that kind of concerns me when I read this list of everything that can go there under M2. I'm not saying M1 might not be a better fit, but for the, his property sits up higher than the property beside it. So anything that comes off that property is naturally gonna run across his neighbor's land. And it's gonna feed into the creek down below it, which is gonna feed into the huge pond below that, which is gonna feed into the Bannister River, which is gonna feed into the Dan River. So I just, if it were your property that you own beside, beside it, would you want it, you know, changed to M2 if it was, if you had valuable farmland, and you knew that stuff drained off of that land onto yours? I don't know. I'm just, I'm just asking that you would maybe put some restrictions. If you wanna keep it M2, put some restrictions on what cannot be put there that would affect the property surrounding it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. Next signed up is Mr. Gene Owen.
My name is Gene Owen. I was born there 62 and a half years ago. And Mr. Rogers' family's been friends with our family. They didn't make a pullout of it. And anything Bill does, he usually does a good job of it. And, but as, Mr. Scares made a point last night, in fact, I know his whole family. And everything he tried to do, it seemed to be a benefit to camp. But as he was describing, how the land slopes and the water, all that is true. And very valuable. What I've been told, you hear God's everything and that, this stuff that you take, do the, they do your thing here, anything just about can be put there except the nuclear waste, no doubt there, for this improvement. And I've been sure by Mr. Rogers, that personally, face-to-face, tonight, that what's not gonna go there was possible going in, possibly something that may have been exactly what I would want with the neighborhood on the property where I grew up on, there on 29. I still live right there on 29, and represent my brother, old brother, Tom Solins here, and my brother-in-law, my sister, our sister passed away, Dr. Agent Bola Hatcher, that owns it in there. And I sincerely hope that whatever does end up being there does not damage our neighbors. All around the Spring Garden, that farm ties in Spring Garden, Mr. Rogers' farm goes all the way through until back of my farm, Marshall Kendall. Property ties into that and Spring Garden. And we don't have any problems. We're looking back a year from now, six months from now. And I know what it has to do with, I got off the farm in '68, and that was all over his nation. And so I want him to be successful, make more money for his family, grandchildren, and everything else and that. But we don't, nothing going there that's going to damage the value of our farm, our property. But once you rent property, and I know from being a runner and commercial stuff, all over his nation, things happen. You can't control what John, that Sue, that whatever, or corporation that comes in. I stood a few many years ago, and when Chinese wanted to industrial pig farm, it doesn't make a camp. And we stopped that thing, got it in there, because we're neighbors. We're all live here together, and so fortunate to be in Pennsylvania County, here in Virginia, America. And I don't think, Mr. Rogers, would, in his lifetime, do anything that would damage our property, our community, in any way. But you all sit up here as the judge and the juror. And I appreciate it, we're citizens, that the traffic is gonna be a problem. We've already had the E-Tors open up there, and the traffic, we all need to make sure the DMV, maybe lose it, slow inside down the 45, or in the curve up there.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Yes, sir. Mr. Rogers, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I mean, 29 is the highway anyway. Anything that is done there will definitely not affect his property. I've lived there longer than he did. I've lived there my whole life, and I plan to finish it out. That is, the gentleman referred to the actual spring. It's within probably 100 foot of the boundary line, which will be on our, that's part of the thing. And any of y'all that have done any site work in the last few years know what you're dealing with. I mean, the average person does not realize what, what the DQ and COV engineers all require and that. That, it's not, there's not creeks running across the property. Creeks running all the way down to boundary line on the side where the ponds are, one of the, one of the parts is in the rezoning thing that will be used for sediment erosion, which, like I said, has no environmental issues in it. Like I said, the screen is compared to the road on the edge of the property, and property would ought to be in a landscape where it's a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Stay close. The case and board, once we get to that point, has some questions. I'll close the public hearing at 7:43. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, there with me, my motion is on the other end. I make a motion to approve case three, R-17-041, to rezone a total of 88.41 acres consisting of three parcels of land. RC1, known A1 Agricultural District, containing 61.25 acres, and two parcels, zone RC-1 Residential Combined Subdivision District, containing 23.31 acres and 3.95 acres respectively, all three parcels, to re, be rezoned to the M2 Industrial District Heavy Industry. And this rezoning is supported by a comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barxdale, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion?
Mr. Scare's first, and then, then Mr. Barx. I just had a couple of questions with Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Rogers, please come forward.
I know, I know you probably, you said this, I think, tonight, you know, you did so in the planning commission. You have no, right now, there's nothing on the books, nothing that you plan on developing. You just wanna get it rezoned at this point?
The plan to the county is working on this, but not...
Okay. Well, I just, I can tell you that most of the people who were initially opposed to it after I discussed with them what's on the permitted uses just for the M2 heavy industry, they're not as upset with. They're kind of upset with the special use permitted uses. And I just wondered if that would be, if we could do a conditional rezoning to preclude those special permits. Is that something?
Certain things require a special use permit, but the property across the road is now the circle chain convenience store, and trust up requires a special use permit. It was owned into, did require a special use permit.
Okay. Well, I just, I know you're gonna have to come back before the board with anything that is gonna require a special use permit anyway. I just know that if it's something that I got, I've gotten a lot of feedback from, I, Tim White Oak Worship Center, and there's a lot of people at the church that were concerned with some of the special use permitted uses. Otherwise, they weren't too concerned about the M2 reclassification. I just wanna make sure you're aware of those concerns.
On, on all the land on two sides of this property, on all the land side, point of first, side two, which is not included in there. But I live there, and I don't plan to, and like I said, you can see across the road, unique entrances is there, Candle Company and Dale Will's, certainly, at one time. We don't plan to choke it out.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. Hold on, Mr. Barx. I got Mr. Barber next.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to comment. I've known Mr. Rogers about 14 years, and I ain't got nothing but high respect for him. I've never known him do anything that he said he wanna do. And I went out there and toured his property one time. He actually, as he said, borders it, and I don't think he would do anything to hurt his own property, because he'd be downstream for it. And he brought up a point too about DQ, and but he's dealt with them. They're not gonna let you go over and do anything environmentally these days. So I know he'll do what he says and take, make it a plus in the neighborhood, because I've seen the projects he's done, and he always does a superb job.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Right now, I have a good standing with the seldom erosion with the county. They always pretty happy with me.
Mr. Barx.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Barber said, so, thank you, Mr. Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. No other comments. Role call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barx?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Mr. Rogers, the property's been rezoned. Thank you, sir. We'll move to case four, Nelson Hines and Deborah Hines, Tunstall Election District. We'll open the public hearing at 7:47. Mr. Sides?
Mr. Chairman, case four, R-17-042, Nelson and Deborah Hines have petitioned to rezone 1.84 acres located off State Road 950, Barclay Place, in the Tunstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to combine with the family farm and subdivide to family members. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all use is listed under Section 35-178 for permitted use. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by 8-0 vote. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nelson Hines is here to represent the petition.
Okay, Mr. Hines, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you. I will close the public hearing at 7:48. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, case R-17-042, I'd like to make a motion that we rezoned this property from R1 to A1.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion? Seeing, role call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barx?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Mr. Hines, your property's been rezoned. Thank you. We'll move to case five, Casey Wolf and Kimberly Wolf, Stanton River Election District. We'll open the public hearing at 7:49. Mr. Sides?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Case five, R-17-043, Casey Wolf and Kimberly Cox Wolf have petitioned to rezone 5.54 acres located off State Road 757, Orange Road...
seven fifty-seven, Orange Road, on Reservoir View Drive, in the Stanton River Election District, from R one residential suburban subdivision district to A one agricultural district, to allow for construction of an accessory building to be used for storage and land maintenance. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one seventy-eight are permitted use. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting petition request by A zero vote. Staff summaries enclosed in the board packet and Mr. Chairman, Casey Wolf, to represent the petition.
Mr. Wolf, do you have anything to add?
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Close the public hearing at seven fifty, because no citizen signed up. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, in case five, R dash one seven dash zero four three, I make a motion to rezone from R one residential suburban subdivision district to A one agricultural district, general on five point five-four acres, located off State Road seven fifty-seven, Orange Road, on Reservoir View Road, in the Stanton River District.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? Seeing, roll call, Ms. Lippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scars?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barxdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to B, Pennsylvania County Code, potential revisions of public hearings.
Can I say something briefly? This request comes to us tonight from the Pennsylvania County Schools. There have been issues in the county with individuals and automobiles not abiding by the blinking and flashing lights and the stop signs on school buses and going around them when children are getting on the bus and getting off the bus. Virginia Code section forty-six point two eight four four B, which I've attached, allows, if the county has adopted the ordinance, the school system to place cameras on their buses, or contract with a third party to put cameras on their buses, that take videos of people who are violating the law, endangering children, and then those steals or video can be used in court to prosecute these individuals with the money going towards the school system. They cannot place these videos on the bus unless the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors adopts the ordinance allowing them to do so. I have attached a copy of the proposed video monitoring system ordinance in the packet. I've also attached an ordinance that allows you to adopt this new code section. Also, there will not be any additional cost to Pennsylvania County. There's an email from Tracy Worley of the schools in our packet, approximately, it's approximately three thousand dollars per bus for these cameras. They, the school system at their own expense, plans to put this, put these cameras on one or two buses, and then move those buses with the cameras to the areas of the county which these instances are happening. So they will put them on a couple of buses and move them around to the problem areas. In order to adopt this code section, the law requires us to have a public hearing, and that's why we're here today, it's been duly advertised in the newspaper.
Okay, no one signed up to hear from it. I see Dr. Jones is here, would you like to, do you have anything you'd like to add, Dr. Jones?
Well, no, sir, we, other than, thank you very much for having us here today, we've had several buses this year, driver reports.
Dr. Jones, can you come up to the microphone, because we're taping this?
We're recording.
That's okay.
There's several bus drivers called Mr. Scott, Kevin Scott, who's our director of transportation this year, reporting that drivers are passing buses while their students are loading, and students are unloading. This is a way that we can move the bus around to areas where we have reported instances of this, and actually make video or take pictures of this. We can send these to the sheriff department, and they can prosecute. Thank, thank for the safety of children, I think we need to do this.
Dr. Jones, any questions, comments?
Mr. Warren, I'm not sure if you did, let's open the hearing and then close it, I'm not sure if you did.
You stopped me.
Okay.
We'll open the public hearing at seven fifty-three, and no one signed up, so we're closed at seven fifty-four. Now, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve ordinance number eleven dash zero two, adding Article eight, Video Monitoring Systems, Sections nine dash two zero one through nine dash two zero through three, to Chapter nine, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, to the Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania County Code.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Seeing, roll call, Ms. Lippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scars?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barxdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
And Dr. Jones, just while you're here, I'd like to compliment the school system from the board, and apologize for not being able to be there yesterday afternoon, I was out of town. They got their third blue ribbon school, which is almost unheard of in the state of Virginia for to have three blue ribbon schools, Mount Airy, Union Hall, and Tunstall High School. And I think last year Tunstall High School was the only high school in the state of Virginia that got the blue ribbon, is that not right?
Yes, that's right.
Appreciate the excellent job, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hearing two, public hearing to receive citizens' input on a proposal on its plans to undertake equipment financing to expand and improve the county's emergency communication system. I'll open the public hearing at seven fifty-five with Ms. Vanderhyde.
Yes, the county plans to undertake lease purchase equipment financing in an estimated maximum amount of two million dollars to pay for the cost of new steel towers to be located within the geographic boundaries of the county on a parcel owned by the department with a street address of, this is Tunstall Fire Department, as a matter of fact, located at seven forty Tunstall High School Road, Drive North, Virginia, and a parcel owned by the county with a street address of nine eighty Old Mayfield Road, and that's in Daniels. And this will cover the cost of the related equipment, as well as the cost and expenses related to undertaking the financing. And so, at the request of our bond counsel, he recommended that a public hearing be held because Tunstall Fire and Rescue is a five oh one C three organization, and as such, the Internal Revenue Service requires that a public hearing is needed, since the county will be using five oh one C three property for the potential use of finance property. But this public hearing has been duly advertised, and it was appeared in the Star Tribune on November the eighth, so it satisfies the IRS requirement of newspaper publication of at least fourteen calendar days before this public hearing. And so, tonight, we want to hear citizen input about replacement of the tower on the property of Tunstall Fire Department, not on the property that we currently own, because the county owns that property.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde. No citizens signed up to speak, so I'll close the public hearing at seven fifty-seven. Board's pleasure.
You all will actually vote for the resolution, just a little bit, so this one doesn't really require us to take action.
Your action item is going to be eleven A, and also the added item that we have.
I'm going by the agenda to call for a roll call.
That's incorrect.
You skipping the presentation.
You're skipping Mr. Bebo's presentation.
Oh, yeah, you doing both?
Yeah.
Okay. Pennsylvania County Community Services Annual Report, Ms. Vanderhyde from Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services Board.
I'm going to put my DPCS hat on for this one. So Chairman Warren, members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Smithman and staff, of course, you all know me, I am Kim Vanderhyde. I am staff for Pennsylvania County, but I'm also a member of Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services Board of Directors. It is with great pleasure that I present to you our annual report fiscal year two thousand seventeen, and I believe Mr. Bebo passed you out some colorful brochures, they give you some highlights of our last year, and it gives you some very important information about what our organization does. This year, our annual report theme is a clean and simple message to the community focusing on who we are, who we serve, and what we do. The information in our report outlines the ways that DPCS serves the citizens of Danville and also Pennsylvania County as the preferred provider of top-quality behavioral health, developmental disability, and prevention services. The unique cover of this year's annual report presents a small collection of the food at DPCS, some of the individuals that receive services and the staff that serve them. Who we are, DPCS is a workforce of nearly three hundred strong, composed of men and women who are passionate and dedicated in their work to help others live, work, and play in their communities at their maximum potential. Each one of the staff brings their unique passion, skill set, and focus that makes an impact each day on the lives of those we are honored to serve. DPCS is also a volunteer board of directors composed of fifteen citizens dedicated to our community. Seven of those board members are appointed by Danville City Council, and the remaining eight, including myself, are appointed by you, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Who we serve, the staff at DPCS work with infants, toddlers, children, adolescents, adults, and seniors, every one in our community. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen, DPCS directly serves seventeen thousand three hundred and sixteen residents of the city of Danville, Pennsylvania County, through one hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-five distinct units of service. What we do, there are nearly one hundred unique programs for adults and children operated by DPCS through its Behavioral Health Developmental and Prevention Services divisions. Some of these programs are small, focused, and provide a very specific service, such as Inside Out Dad, working with forty-four incarcerated men to connect them with their families and become more responsible and committed to their children while in jail and once they return to the community. Other DPCS programs, such as Case Management, that is found in all of our divisions, serve three thousand two hundred and thirteen individuals last fiscal year. The variety and complexity of DPCS's services meet the needs of individuals with a behavioral health disorder, a developmental disability, or those who may be at risk. Tonight, I would like to bullet point just a few of the incredible numbers and programs that DPCS staff facilitated in FY twenty seventeen. In our prevention division, we served eleven thousand three hundred and eleven individuals in the school and the community, including programs such as Red Ribbon Week, a national drug prevention campaign, and mental health first aid training for any resident of the community to recognize and respond to a mental health crisis, just like first aid and CPR or medical crisis. In our developmental and behavioral health services division, we served three hundred and five individuals with a home and community-based waiver, so that they could thrive in the community and not simply reside in an institution. We provided six thousand eight hundred and forty-seven medication management appointments for adults and children. And finally, demonstrating the scope of one core service provided to most individuals served at DPCS, thirty thousand fifteen units of case management were provided to three thousand two hundred and thirteen individuals. These are just a few of the examples of, these are just a few examples of the one, of the nearly one hundred unique programs for adults and children operated by DPCS through its Behavioral Health Developmental and Prevention Services Division. In closing, on behalf of our Board of Directors, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for appointing eight members from Pennsylvania County to Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services Board of Directors. It is our honor and pleasure to serve the community in this capacity. We appreciate your confidence and ongoing support. Jim Bebo is here, he's coming up with the DPCS executive director, he is here with me tonight, and he will assist you in any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Okay, board, have any questions?
I'll just make the comment that thank you, and I thank this board for appointing me to that board several years ago. It has been a pleasure to serve on that board, and they do an outstanding job, and, gosh, they do so much, and it's always, every T's crossed and every Z's dotted, and they do a whole lot, sometimes with not a lot of promise, so we appreciate what you all do for Pennsylvania County and the whole region, so thank you very much from the board.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say one thing?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde, what a brilliant transition from financial manager for the, for the county, right, to the DPCS, but thank, thank you very much. And if I would run out of time, before I run out of good things to say about the DPCS organization, thank you, Mr. Bobo, and it's a pleasure for me to continue to serve on the Board of Directors, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're down now to Resolution two oh one seven dash one one dash oh one E nine one one Tower Debt Refinancing Resolution, Ms. Vanderhyde.
Now, I'll put my finance here. The resolution that you have before you is a resolution for the Board of Supervisors to proceed with the debt refinance of our E nine one tower project that occurred back in two thousand twelve. This is being done tonight so that we can add an additional two towers. From the public hearing that we just recently held, it's a few months ago, one of those towers will be located at seven forty Tunstall High School Road, which is on Tunstall Fire and Rescue's property. The other will be located at nine forty Old Mayfield Road in Danville, Virginia. And so, after we've had the public hearing, it's now time to pass that resolution for us to do this refinance, which will add an additional one million nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. That will help to construct the towers, as well as to put the necessary equipment, as well as the engineering for this project. And we will be refinancing at an interest rate of just over two and a quarter percent. It would take two years to our current financing structure. That is a ten-year loan that would have ended only in two thousand twenty-three, and we extend it to two thousand twenty-five. If I'm here, if anybody has any questions about the resolution.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, under the blanket of integrity, and I took an oath when I came to this office to uphold the health, safety, and general welfare of my constituents in Dan River District, as well as Pennsylvania County as a whole, I make the motion that the Board of Supervisors approve the E nine one one debt refinance resolution, Resolution two zero one seven dash one one dash zero one, and authorize staff to obtain the necessary signatures to finalize the paperwork needed before closing.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Barxdale, any discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, when I, when I first saw this, Mr. Davis brought to us, I had heartburn on this one, I was like, look forward. As he showed us the need and the reception with the Fire and Rescue and the Sheriff's Department, you know, I thought back one time when I was in the fire department, we was on a call, a brush fire call, we needed backup, we couldn't get out, this was years ago, but that's a scary feeling, and I don't want these guys to get out and not be able to get help when they need it, it's a, I mean, it's a no brainer. He also showed me the area we're going to pick up on Berry Hill, which is where we're doing industrial, it's tremendous benefit, but I just think about the safety of those people out there volunteering, and they need backup or need help, they need to get through, and this is definitely a dead zone, as it was brought to our attention by Thompson Fire Department. I support it fully.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Any other, any other comments, questions? Okay, roll call, Ms. Lippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scars?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barxdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. We'll move to item eleven A two, it was passed out to you at the beginning of the meeting, and added to the agenda.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies of the office, I just want to quickly go through this, and just as a recap, in the August of two thousand sixteen, it's well over a year ago, the Fire and Rescue Association met with myself and several other people from the Harris Radio Corporation to discuss the radio system, and it was at that time that we had been trying to figure out where some of the areas of the county were having issues at. One of those areas was Tunstall Fire Department, was identified that night, and of course, on the original system that was designed, both, all the vendors that submitted a response said we'd have to have a minimum of eleven tower sites. a response said we'd have to have a minimum of 11 tower sites. We could not afford 11 tower sites, so we had to scale it back to eight tower sites. And as a result of that, it was one of the areas that we have pockets. Pennsylvania County is not flat land. We have a lot of dips and valleys, and we have some mountains. So, it did not give us the portable radio coverage we needed. Tunstall Fire Department gave us proof in the pudding as to where those areas at, that we were able to go out and ride and test and find where the holes were at within. After that meeting in August, we had a Radio Telecommunications Committee call. And after that meeting, we had back around February this year, it was then determined and requested by that committee to make sure there are no other areas, that if we're going to address something, let's make sure we clean this up the best we can at one time. It was that time Bakers Hall Fire Department then stepped forward and said, we're having a lot of issues at Berry Hill Road and the State Line Bridge area, and we need to do something there as well. It was asked about to all county fire departments at the meetings again, after we brought up the information to them, any other areas. Now, I'm not going to tell you tonight this is going to fix all in, though. Again, we were told originally it's going to take a minimum of 11 sites, and we couldn't afford it. Tonight, we only added and requesting to add two additional sites, which still brings it to 10, still not at 11. But, and what Mr. Barber said a while ago is very true, and I worry just as much as anyone else would, especially the dispatchers, when somebody keys the radio, we hear them the first time, every time. We're going to want to have to go back and say, repeat, and they cannot call us back on the radio and tell us what problems. But that may as it is, we now feel fairly confident with these two sites that we're adding for the south end of the county. And geographically, if you could just sit back and look at your mind how Pennsylvania County border is, it's narrower at the top and goes wider at the bottom in geography. So, these two sites are going into the south side to help bring up the holes that's in the south side of the county. The coverage maps has been provided by Harris, they did engineering studies for, for both Tunstall area and for the Bakers Hall area as well. And those gaps are going to be significantly filled, significantly, as you seen on those maps that we provided in those committee meetings. So, tonight, I bring to you the item to be added at the request of both the joint finance committee meeting was done in September and with the telecommunications committee meeting, I went back and asked Harris to give us a contract amendment, and then they have at this point for the amount of $1,184,000 for two sites. This does not include the towers. We're going to do that ourselves through a separate bid and save money. I did it before. I feel like I can do it again. If I have Harris to do it, it's going to increase the cost. I've done it before, I can do it again. What if I, if I still, I lie? No, I'm sorry. Okay. That's my bringing to you tonight and requesting for you to approve the amendment. This is an amendment. It's been looked at by both separate consultants, we have federal engineering, to make sure that we are within the procurement laws as well with the county procurement policy. And being this is an add-on amendment and not a new contract, we therefore are still within the competitiveness of the procurement, original bid and contract we have. So, we satisfy those as well. So, I'm asking you tonight, if you would, to authorize the county administrator to sign contract amendment number six. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Stay close and see something. The Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize the county administrator to execute the Harris contract amendment in the amount of $1,184,000.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scars.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Item 11B, Comprehensive Services Act Budget Amendment. Ms. Vanderhyde. Wearing your CSA hat now?
CSA. If you all remember, we'll remember back in June of 2017, at your June 20th meeting, you all approved for a supplement to pay for the FY 17 CSA program expenditures. At that time, a total of $3,171,830 of state funds were appropriated along with $628,170 of local funds, and that was to cover those FY 17 expenditures. Since June 30, we have spent a total of $1,536,742.36. They were prior year expenditures, so we're requesting that what you all approved in June carry over to cover those expenditures, because if not, we're going to run out of the funds that we've budgeted for this year. So, what I'm asking for tonight is for you all to make a motion to carry those funds over, but they will lay over for 10 days so that it'll be brought back to you in December for the actual vote. But these are funds that you've already previously approved at a prior meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde. Any questions from Ms. Vanderhyde?
One, this is mandated, is that correct?
It is.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Board's pleasure.
I still need a motion in a second.
We need a motion in a second to lay it all.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to Board of Supervisors approve and appropriate $1,198,873.18 of state funds, $317,176.94 of local funds to the Community Policy and Management Team Budget for CSA services.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Barksdale, and it is for the 10-day layoff. Thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde. Refund request of Virginia PCS Alliance LLC. It says, Mr. Hammock, I guess, Mr. Smith.
I can take this one.
Okay.
I'll do Ms. Hammock for tonight. This is a request for refund of level taxes for Virginia PCS Alliance LLC. Assessments from the State Corporation Commission are made based on the prior year's information, and there was a change of circumstances, and it was found embedded by the state and Ms. Hammock that Virginia PCS Alliance LLC overpaid their taxes in the amount of $6,384. So, what staff is asking today is pursuant to authority in Pennsylvania County Code Section 6-6.2, that you issue a refund request to Virginia PCS Alliance LLC for, in the amount of $6,563.37, for the treasurer to issue that refund.
Okay. Any questions? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize the treasurer to issue the refund request to Virginia PCS Alliance LLC as presented for a total amount of $6,563.37. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barksdale, second by Mr. Davis. Any questions or discussion? I just have one, Mr. Hunt. This is more of a curiosity question than anything. Who sets the interest rate that is paid on these refunds? Because it looks like it's about 4% if you took it on an annual basis, and I don't know anybody hitting 4% on no-risk money.
It's actually, it's set by the state in that order. It used to be 10%, and there was a case in Richmond where a business intentionally overpaid their taxes by several hundred dollars. They got 10% return on their money. So, they moved it down to 4%.
I think it's about overpaying. Is 4% a good return on that?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. Just a curiosity question. Okay, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scars.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. We're down to 11D, refund request for Danville Cellar Phone Company.
I'll take this again. This is another overpayment on taxes, and it is for Danville Cellular Telephone Company, LP, and the total amount that the treasurer is requesting the board refund with interest and the overpayment in the amount of $21,565.48.
Okay. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize the treasurer to issue the refund request to Danville Cellar Telephone Company, LP, as presented for a total amount of $21,568.48. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barksdale, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scars.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. We're down to 11D, request for public hearing to amend 6.6-3 tax exemption by designation or classification property known by Northside High School Museum. Ms. Hammock again, so I guess you got it, Mr. Hunt?
Yes, all staff is seeking today is authority from the Board of Supervisors to advertise a public hearing for the proposed amendment to Pennsylvania County Code 6.6-3, real estate property exemption by qualified classification or designation to include real estate property known as GPEN 2530-38-6169. It's located on the corner of Northside Drive and Peony Street Extension in Redwood, Virginia, and is owned by the Northside High School Museum. So, we just want authority to be able to advertise it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll put that in form of a motion stated by the county attorney.
Okay. You don't have to repeat it.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, second by Mr. Scars. Any discussion? Just, just for the record and for the public, we're talking about six-hundredths of an acre of land that was purchased, gifted, or whatever to them earlier. Roll call concerning the public hearing.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scars.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. 11F, request for public hearing, amend P Pennsylvania County Code Section 2-22, running at large designation in restricted areas to include Green Farm Road. Mr. Davis.
I probably can take this.
Okay, Mr. Hunt.
This is just a request to the Board of Supervisors for a public hearing to make a dog, no dogs running at large area in Pennsylvania County, and this was brought to you, I believe, one time before, and the reason why it was tabled at that time is that there was not greater than 50% of the residents in that subdivision desiring to have this restriction on dogs. They got more signatures, they're attached in the packet, and now the number of property owners on Green Farm Road is now, 64.3% of them are requesting a public hearing for citizen input on many Pennsylvania County Code Section 2.2-22, dogs running at large, restriction in designated zones. We're just seeking authority from the board to place this ad and have this before you on the December meeting.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to direct staff to advertise a public hearing for proposed amendment to include Green Farm Road in Section 2.2-22, running at large restriction in a designated area of Pennsylvania County Code.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hagerman. Any discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Did you have so many signatures on Green Farm Road?
I can answer that because I had to verify. They, you don't have, they've been verified. They have to be the property owners, they don't necessarily have to live there.
Thank you.
Good question, Mr. Barber. Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call concerning the public hearing.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scars.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Courthouse chiller replacement, 11G, Mr. Hicks.
The chiller in this building, which is all the courtrooms and the newer, of course, now the courthouse has stopped working, is a 135-ton chiller that was installed in 1991. We've tried several efforts to fix it, can't fix it. So, we think it needs to be replaced. Our estimated cost of replacement is around $250,000. It will have an impact on the current budget because it is not a budgeted service right now. And by the time we take in RFP, set the deals, bring the bids back to you, have it installed, it will probably be pushing April 1st or, that'd be first part of April, something needs to move forward as soon as possible. I really wouldn't want to be in hot court telling the judge, we don't have AC.
So, you're just seeking authority tonight to put the RFP on street. Mr. Barber.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for that.
Got one.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, second by Mr. Barksdale. Discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, this ain't a mandate, but it is a mandate. As Mr. Hicks pointed out, I was sitting there thinking, it will be a mandate if we, the judge comes in, is hot, and they don't have any AC, you're going to have to support it.
Any other discussion?
Did we not have a chiller go out on, what was that, the?
The 65-ton chiller we replaced last year, and it serves the older. So, you, you know, this is the last chiller.
Were these put in, put in at the same, I mean, same time?
This is the, the chiller Mr. Hicks is talking about is the original chiller of this addition that we're sitting in now. I think it was 1991. The 65-ton was for the old part of the courthouse. So, if you remember, it's like three courthouses attached to each other. This is the original equipment from 1991.
Mr. Hawker told, notified the board when we replaced the Ellicella that this was coming. He told us at the time, a presentation to the board, that this was going to happen.
Lucky it didn't happen in June or July. You have some time to look at it, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scars.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Down to 11H, Sheriff's Department radios. It says, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Chairman, did you send a thing over, or anything else, or what do you put in this package, sir?
Okay. Mr. Hunt's going to fill in for him.
I can help you. No, I think I got it. The sheriff department's existing unit, 100 Harris handheld radios warranty expire, will expire in 2020. There was a recent meeting with Harris. The Harris LX-200 handheld radios have been offered by Harris at extremely viable and attractive purchase price. These newer radios will still have enough LTE technology for communication even when there's no connectivity to the county's existing tower sites. This has been vetted by myself, Harris, and Ms. Gibson, our purchasing manager. This is a sole source issue because of the price and the compatibility, and it's in the amount of $229,680.88 for 154 radios, chargers, and bay chargers. This money will come from the 242 fund, the federal restrictive fund account. That is asset forfeiture, so this money is, is not coming off of our backs here. So, the staff is asking the board to authorize the purchase of the 154 radios, bay chargers for the sheriff, in the amount of $229,680.88 from the asset forfeiture fund, noting that this is a sole source purchase.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put that in form of motion stated by the county attorney on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Let me ask one question. Mr. Barber, once that purchase is made, what happens to the old ones? Do we sell them on eBay or something? Does that kind of office?
Yes, that's part of, we have to prepare those.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's a trade-in. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde. Mr. Scars.
I've just got one question. If maybe we ought to think about doing this for the fire and rescue, at least for the fire chiefs and their assistants, perhaps, for the same radio system, correct? LTE technology might be appropriate for those command positions.
Maybe Mr. Slip can give us a recommendation in the future, right?
As I bring that up, maybe you can think about that when. As I bring that up, maybe you can think about that when, I mean, I know it's gonna cost us money, but if we put the command positions in line with those LTE, it might, might be something to look at.
We'll gather information and bring that back to you.
Could you ask, will you use this account to pay for those? I didn't think you could, I just wanted to make sure.
That's the, that's the catcher, right?
I wasn't planning on trying to jump on the sheriff's budget, I'm sure he wouldn't appreciate that.
Good question, though, Mr. Scares. And, and we're open to nominations.
That's right.
I'd like to point out that this is, this is coming, this is not coming out of the general fund. In our budget, in our, in, in our reserves, we talk about funds that are already obligated or restricted funds. And in this particular fund, uh, the sheriff has six, well, he doesn't have, it's actually taxpayers' money, it's where the, when the sheriffs go out and raid drug dealers and whom of them, uh, that money is set aside into a special account. And that account can only be utilized for, for specific purposes. And so this is one of those purposes it is allowed to be utilized for. Currently, that account has six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Okay.
Ready? Mr. Barkstow.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. We're down to eleven I.
Mr. Barber.
You haven't called him yet?
I got Mr. Barber.
Eleven I, twenty eighteen general reassessment extension request from Pennsylvania County by Board of Su, uh, Board of Assessors. He's on, he's straight in the second. Okay, this is Mr. Hunt for sure.
That's right. Uh, I'm on a roll here. Um, the, the, the legal deadline for completing the Pennsylvania County two thousand eighteen general tax reassessment is December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. The chairman of the Board of Assessors contacted county staff and asked pursuant to legal authority in Virginia Code section fifty-eight point one, thirty-two fifty-seven, which is attached in your packet, to, for the Board of Supervisors to request that the county attorney ask the judge of Pennsylvania County Circuit Court to grant a sixty-day extension to complete, uh, the necessary steps to finalize the assessment and conduct the necessary appeals. The reason for this delay is that there's been significant turnover in the reassessment clerical, uh, staff. They anticipate, uh, this, um, extension to not take sixty days, but to be completed within thirty day period after December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. There's no additional, um, fund, funding issues with the county. What staff is seeking is for the Board, uh, of Supervisors to make a motion to approve the Board of Assessors' request for a sixty-day extension to complete the county's two thousand eighteen general reassessment appeals, and direct the county attorney to request said extension from the Pennsylvania County Circuit Court Judge.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Board of Assessors' request for a sixty-day extension to complete the county's two thousand eighteen general assessment, reassessment, and appeals, and direct the county attorney to request said extension from the Pennsylvania County Circuit Court Judge.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barkstow. Any discussion or questions? I just have one, Mr. Hunter and Ms. Vaner Hyde. How will this impact you, Ms. Vaner Hyde, and your job?
We probably will have figures already concerning the reassessment, they'll just be going through hearings, so there may be some tweaks to it, but we should be getting big progress in there.
Should prohibit our processes.
Shouldn't.
Okay, and, uh, I would like to see us, you know, stress that we would prefer the thirty, meet that thirty day that they think they can, to continue to drag it out, just for me personally. All right, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barkstow.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Uh, we're down to twelve appointments. For Mr. Planning Commission, uh, one ninety-seven. Ms. Flippin, says you're, you're up on this.
I gotta flip to my page.
Ninety-six.
Um, we have two appointments, one for the Dan River District and one for the Tunstall District Representatives. Mr. Davis has nominated in a request to me that he would appreciate, uh, Mr. Horn to be reappointed as the Dan River District Representative to the Planning Commission.
Okay, uh, Mr. Davis, would you like to make that form of a?
I certainly would. I make a motion to appoint Brian Horn as the Dan River Representative on the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission for a four-year term that will commence January first, two thousand eighteen through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Davis. Seconded by Mr. Barkstow. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barkstow.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Do we have any other appointments to the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'll have one forthcoming next month, I'll, my guy on there, couldn't get in touch with him, if he's not gonna do it, I'll have a new nomination for the next meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barber. We're moved to twelve B, appointments to Pennsylvania County Service Authority, Stan River District.
I'm not gonna make a motion to appoint myself.
Can somebody help, Mr. Barber?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a mo, I make a motion that we appoint, reappoint, uh, Mr. the Honorable, uh, Blackstock, uh, for a second term on the Pennsylvania County Service Authority to serve four years, um, a four-year term per appointment.
Second.
Motion made, I mean, Barkstow, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
I'm staying.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barber. Mr. Warren. I mean, it's Mr. Barkstow, I'm sorry.
Yes. All right, we're down to twelve C, appointments to Pennsylvania County Public Library of Trustees, uh, town hurt representative.
Mr. Chairman, um, have a very well-qualified candidate to be appointed to the Pennsylvania County Public Library Board of Trustees, Phyllis Roach. Uh, she is a retired principal and has been very active, uh, in our community over the years. I could point out that she was one of my original vacation Bible school teachers, did a good job. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Phyllis Roach as a town of Hurt representative on the Pennsylvania County Public Library Board of Trustees for a four-year term that will commence July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, and seconded by Mr. Davis. Is that who I heard?
Yes, sir, and Mr. Hagerman.
And, well, thank you, I think the first one spoke out the thing. Any discussion?
I'd just like to point out that, uh, Ms. Toots here tonight, and what a wonderful job, and what, uh, that she does is heading up our Library Board of Trustees and our Library, Library Board, Library System in Pennsylvania County. It's a wonderful thing. And when you think about libraries, some of us, I'm not that old, but I'm getting there, you think about the libraries you used to go to when you were a child. Libraries are much more now, and I encourage you to go and vis, to visit your local library.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, uh, add to that. Ms. Toots does an outstanding job, uh, I consider her a personal friend. I appreciate her service to the United States as well as her husband. And not only that, but she adds a freshness to the library system that pushes, I would call it entrepreneurial, uh, leadership as well as education through the children's level all the way to the adult level.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barkstow.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. I echo those same sentiments, Ms. Toots. Uh, matters from work session. Mr. Flippin.
Sure, I'll use this time to hit a couple of highlights that we were not able to get to, and also I'll defer in a moment to Assistant County Minister Greg Sides, uh, to update on a, on a matter. First of all, I want to bring to your attention, we were gonna have a brief conversation that I will use, uh, this time to convey regarding the master lease program, which is a line of borrowing capacity for the county, uh, to use for certain proj, projects that are leveraging, uh, real property. We are potentially going to come to the board to use this to buy out our lease of the Mount Herman Library, which we anticipate will save the county somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars and secure the improvements that the library. Foundation? That the Library Foundation is paying for at that currently leased site. Uh, we anticipate those savings over a ten-year period. Our lease payment, or our loan payments will be approximately equal to our current lease payments, and will own the property at the end of the term. Uh, that's one item that we propose potentially using this borrowing for. The second is for economic development financing, um, for undisclosed project that the board is aware of. And the third, unfortunately, may be proposing the use of funds to, uh, purchase and or, or lease, uh, equipment to replace outdated and obsolete, uh, not working equipment at our landfill that you were briefed on earlier today. Uh, this will come to a vote next month, um, and then the board will have to individually approve any uses of these funds. Uh, so I, I just reemphasize that anything this is used for, uh, would be after a public hearing and upon affirmative vote of the Board of Supervisors, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that. Second item was just making you aware, and also to make the public aware, that we are ready to solicit proposals for the use of the armory. And it's a solicitation that we committed to the Buildings and Grounds Committee some months ago. Uh, we have had a lot of interest from nonprofit, government, for-profit, uh, myriad of uses for that property. So our commitment to everyone, we will give you a shot. Uh, so we are putting out an informal solicitation for letters of interest, and we will collect those letters of interest and decide with your, upon consultation with you and the Buildings and Grounds Committee, which letters of interest we would like to have developed into full proposals. We will also have internal departments to Pennsylvania County Government probably submitting letters of interest for that property. This will continue, I believe, through the end of January, so I could see us, uh, reviewing these later in the winter. And at this time, I'm, um, I'll pause and see if you have any questions on either of those, uh, items.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smitherman, it's just a thought, not pushing back on anything, but I hope that we will really take in, uh, that we will consider, um, any proposals coming from our, say, constitutional offices, department heads, who need a little bit more space or whatever it is. So in a nutshell, I'm just saying that, let's see what the needs are, or pay attention to the needs of our, our people.
Agreed.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Davis.
I got one question on it, Mr. Smitherman, was, uh, I noticed in the lease or the program, rather, not the lease necessarily, but, uh, it says, it said sale or rent, you know, slash rent.
Yes, sir.
The thing is, my question is, if that property was sold by the county, there are set restrictions in place of the previous owners, and so I was just wondering, would you, you have to cover that from a legal standpoint, counselor, or?
Yeah, um, we would have to, uh, the, seek the first right, we have to offer the state first right refusal on it. They've assured us they don't want it back, and then there'd also be, uh, I believe it's somewhere in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range.
Two thirty-five, something like that.
Two thirty-five range, that if, if someone who is not using for governmental purpose would buy it, they would have to, uh, make the state hold because there are some refinancing penalties because that is used as collateral on a larger bond issuance. So nobody's getting a free lunch if it's, goes to a non-governmental thing, they would have to purchase it and have to make the, uh, state hold. We'd also have to seek permission before we could do that.
We didn't want to restrict offers, but I think it's easy to say it's a long shot for us to sell it outright, I think. There'd be, it'd be very expensive, and there'd be a lot of hoops to jump through to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barber.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. Barkstow, that's my, my thought all along, what could we use it for? Cause I knew we cramped, uh, when we first got that building, basically free, I was thinking it would serve a need. We'll get rid of the building, and we need the space right on that road.
I agree, I think it's a hard press, uh, it'll eventually be a hard press for us to let others use it when we have so many needs. The good news is, and Mr. Warren mentioned this earlier this evening, you know, that's quite an asset. It's not just that building, there's building sites on that property, it's a very attractive property for the county long-term. Uh, so I agree with both of you that there is a very compelling case for it to remain in county government use.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Sides, who will give you an update on the Seds program.
Well, gentlemen, I think you all have probably heard this quite a few times, each year, it's a, it's a regular process that we undertake to update our comprehensive economic development strategy. It is a regional document that the West Beetmont Planning District Commission puts together, involving counties of Franklin, Henry, Patrick, Pennsylvania, and the cities of Danville and Martinsville. I have included in your packet the, uh, the list that we submitted last year. Uh, if you recall, I, I explained then that we kept this list for a number of years, about two years ago, I did a really, really major update, and added a lot of projects, and took some old projects out. Uh, we have evolved, Matt Rowe, we kind of developed last year when we updated this list. I see this probably transitioning to Matt and his work in the future, but this is the current list of projects. We'd like to either look through this, offer any inputs to the new Mr. Rowe, or something that you think needs to be added, or any questions about why something is listed on the list. And, uh, the information, uh, again, is somewhat self-explanatory, won't go into details, but short version is, to be federally funded, you need to be on this list. So that's the reason we developed the list. Does not mean that we're gonna do every project on here. The numbers are not a hundred percent verified, it's just that we're gonna apply to the Federal Economic Development Administration for industrial park projects, or some industrial project, it needs to be included in this list. So just please take it, look it over, offer any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. Anybody got any questions on it now?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sides, so when will it come back, Mr. Smitherman?
It will be back at the December nineteenth meeting.
Okay.
The deadline was submitted on December thirty-first.
Okay.
So this way, you get a full line to think about, and it'll come back at your next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Any other questions? Anything else, Mr. Smith?
I, I will just say that, uh, beginning tomorrow, courthouse study? Friday. Friday, we will kick off, uh, the courthouse and jail needs assessment, which is a very, uh, laborious project to consider the state of our current justice center that we're in now, as well as our options for the future. Uh, Mr. Warren and Mr. Blackstock are both on that committee with several judges and the sheriff, and that is kicking off, it should be a, no more than a ninety day, ninety day or a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty day project.
It means at seven AM.
Seven AM. Friday.
Seven AM.
Now, all the meetings with the judges are at seven AM.
Okay, I'll stall with Mr. Warren.
I have none.
Mr. Hagerman.
I just, I just want to bring one item up, and we'll take a second, and that's, Mr. Smitherman, I've received complaints from realtors in the Smith Mountain Lake area. They are complaining that the assessors have either overexcessed property for tax purposes or haven't examined the property at all and are just used years before taxes to check or to obtain taxes. And what it is, I just want to get with you and hopefully get this out. This is, this is several years that I've noted, and I'm, I'd like to get it taken care of.
If you send me a copy, I'll get it to the right person to examine what's going on.
I would certainly do that, but, and that's in the Smith Mountain Road area, so. Thank you. I'll be out, Chairman.
I have none.
Just have one quick one. Bachelor Hall's volunteer fire departments having a Tree of Lights fundraiser on the Fourth of December will be the lighting ceremony. Deadline to purchase your lights is the thirtieth of November. They're five dollars each. I think red is for, in honor of people in your life, and I think white lights are also five dollars for those in honor of people in your life, in honor and memory of people in your life. So, please go out there and help promote this fundraiser and help out the Bachelor Hall's Fire Department.
Mr. Davis.
Just a comment, I want to thank the board for a very productive day. I've enjoyed the meetings today, period, and I think we've just moved the county forward in other certain ways that has to be revealed as time moves on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I did, as I was instructed, I stood in for you at the unveiling this morning at the Chamber of Commerce. It was a great ceremony, and we had a great turnout. The "Love Work" sign is really unique. People just couldn't get enough of it. And our special guest today was the Secretary of Commerce, the Honorable Todd Haymore, along with the Executive Director of Tourism for Virginia, Ms. Rita McLennan. So, if anyone are looking for a use for that sign, you better sign up very quickly because there's already a list, a long list, but it's really first-class, and it was so impressive of the businesses that just did something. They donated a screw or a piece of wood or whatever. Everybody chipped in, and so we took pictures. It was really a proud moment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barksdale. I just have a couple of items. Mr. Chairman, again, I want to thank Ms. Hancock for the kind words and all, and you're right, nobody knows until they step up. I had no idea until I threw my hat in the ring, so I appreciate that very much. I appreciate Mr. Farmer being here. You all did a great job running your campaigns for the county's grit in the district, and I'm sure it's gonna be well-represented going forward. So, thank both of you, and thank both of you for being here tonight. I also want to please ask everyone that possibly can to attend the Chamber Breakfast on December the sixth. It is a very, very important breakfast that is going to be, the speakers will be our Sheriff Taylor, Brian Haskins, Commonwealth Attorney, Chief Broadfoot, and Mike Minneman from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office in Danville. It is solely focused on the crime issue that is plaguing our region and what's going on with that, and it's gonna be geared to tell the businesses, inform them about how they can help with that and more guarantee engagement. We realize that's a significant problem, and it's not just one locality's problem, it's everybody's problem, so if you possibly can work it into your agendas, please attend. I know the board plans to support it, everyone that could possibly be there. Also, Mr. Barksdale stole a little bit from it by saying he filled in for me, but it certainly helped me remember, as I was going through this Thanksgiving and thinking about all the things that I'm thankful for, I had to think about this board. And having served as your chairman this past year, I truly do appreciate each and every one of you. There's never been a time when I couldn't attend something that I didn't call one of these gentlemen, and their first response was, "I'll be there," and that means a lot. Do we always agree? No. Some of the, sometimes the work sessions are, can be pretty lively, and sometimes the conversations we have one-on-one are pretty lively, but they're always respectful, and we're always conscious to be respectful of each other's opinions. That goes a long ways. At the work session, I thanked our staff for the amount of transparency that they've shown and the integrity that they've shown the last year that I've been chairman, and how much information they're providing that I did not receive during my first year, and I'm getting now, and I knew that several of the board members share that, and I just want them to know that during this holiday season of Thanksgiving, I was very thankful for the job. Each and one, each and every one of you do. Nobody knows the number of hours that you spend late nights out. Several times this year, I've been out for meetings that went to ten, eleven o'clock. You know, had to do a little explaining sometimes when they get home, when they run that late. But I do appreciate it very much, but most of all, I appreciate our citizens and the ones that are willing to give up their time and talents and get involved in this process. We do want to hear from you. We may not always agree on every issue, but, you know, for me, and I can tell you from this board because I've experienced it with them, we will listen to what you have to say. And that's all we can do, and please stay involved because it's all about you all, and that's all we want to do, is serve you all in the best manner possible. I thank you, and I declare the meeting adjourned.